Okay, we're going to call this Bristol Tennessee City Council meeting for August 4th, 2017. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Powers?
Here.
Vice Mayor Young?
Here.
Councilwoman Rinning?
Here.
Councilwoman Firehough?
Here.
Mayor Keane?
Here. I'd like to welcome everyone here today and say thank you to you for you for coming to our city council meeting. Your attendance here tonight is much appreciated and interest in our government is is well appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available upon entering entered into the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter into the council chambers for those individuals desiring desiring to speak to council members during the appearance of citizens section of our agenda. Tonight, I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Jack Young to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Lee Powers. Please stand.
If you'll stand with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come together. We thank you for the freedoms that this great country provides each each and every one of us. We also thank you for the honor for us to be able to serve our communities in this capacity. We pray your protection over us, not just as a city, but as an entire area, that you would help us and help us to also be prepared to answer the call when those things do happen. We pray your your wisdom upon us as we go through our business meeting tonight, and we pray these things now in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Sora, do we have any additions for our agenda this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We do have several proclamations and one recognition on the agenda this evening. The first, we would like to recognize Food City for their 25th anniversary of corporate sponsorship to the Food City 500. In 1990, since 1992, Food City and Bristol Motor Speedway have been successful partners in bringing the best of racing to the NASCAR community. This proclamation will be officially presented to the Food City during their race night event at the Bristol Motor Speedway on Friday, April 21st. This evening, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Michelle Rinning to publicly read the proclamation so that all will know of our appreciation for Food City's continued support of NASCAR during the racing in Bristol.
Whereas 2017 marks the 25th anniversary of Food City's corporate sponsorship of the Food City 500 Monster Energy NASCAR Cup Series Race at Bristol Motor Speedway, and whereas Food City operates over 134 stores in Tennessee, Virginia, Kentucky, and Georgia, as well as the corporate offices located just miles from Bristol Motor Speedway, and whereas Food City actually dates back to 1918, having always been community oriented and involved in local efforts, and whereas Food City is the second longest running race sponsor in NASCAR, and the company has contributed over a half million dollars to local organizations through its annual family race night events, and whereas since 1992, Food City and Bristol Motor Speedway have been successful partners that have prided themselves on bringing the best possible experience to race fans from around the world, and whereas Food City is the cornerstone event of the 2017 Spring Race Weekend and one of the most anticipated events on the Monster Energy NASCAR Cup Series schedule, and whereas the Food City name has become synonymous with NASCAR racing in the region due to its sponsorship of two of the sport's most popular races, the Food City 500 and the Food City 300 at Bristol Motor Speedway, and whereas the 2017 Food City 500 Monster Energy NASCAR Cup Series Race will take place on Sunday, April 23rd, and to honor the 25th anniversary of Food City sponsorship, Bristol Motor Speedway issues a special edition race logo and branding for the race, and whereas making the city of Bristol, Tennessee, a top destination for NASCAR fans, therefore be it resolved that Chad Keen, Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim Sunday, April the 23rd, 2017, as a day of celebration in the home of Bristol Motor Speedway in recognition and admiration of this exceptional partnership, the 25th anniversary of the Food City 500, this fourth day of April 2017.
Thank you, Michelle. Again, that officially will be given to Food City on April the 21st. So we're very proud of that of that association.
Yes.
And there. Next, we have a proclamation designating April 28, 2017, as Bristol Arbor Earth Day. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Lee Powers to read the proclamation. Mr. Mike Music, Recreation Superintendent, is in attendance to accept the proclamation. Mike, will you come to the podium, please?
This is just such a beautiful time of year here in Bristol. I know we're all enjoying the beautiful trees and that the city has planted, as well as many of our private partners, and so whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut it heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper products, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business area, and beautify our community, and whereas Arbor Day, Earth Day is a unique celebration focusing not on the past but to the future, and by planting this small tree, we affirm our faith in the future, and whereas the city wishes to thank the Tree Board members for their efforts in helping to improve the quality of life in our city. Now therefore Chad Keen, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim April 28, 2017, as Bristol Arbor Day, Earth Day in the City of Bristol, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to plant trees and commend them for their efforts in reforesting the city.
On behalf of our Tree Board, who does such diligent work with trees in our city, as well as all our city workers who plant and maintain trees on a daily basis, thank you all for this recognition and would like to invite everyone on council to come out to Anderson Elementary School on Friday, April 28th, to enjoy and celebrate as part of our tree planting ceremony there. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have a proclamation designated the month of April as Fair Housing Month. I'd like to ask Vice Mayor Jack Young to read the proclamation. We have Mr. Brian Rose, Director of Planning and Community Development, and Ms. Christina Blevins, Community Development Specialist, with us this evening to accept the proclamation. Brian and Christina, would you please come to the podium, please?
As a proclamation for Fair Housing Month, whereas April 27, 2017, marks the 49th anniversary of the enactment of the Fair Housing Act, and whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1968 seeks to eliminate discrimination in opportunities and to affirmatively make housing choices available for all Americans, and whereas the ongoing efforts to ensure equal housing opportunity for all citizens is not the exclusive role of the federal government, but also requires state and local government efforts to combat housing discrimination as well, and whereas the City of Bristol, Tennessee utilizes a Department of Community Development to implement an effective and responsible fair housing program, and whereas it is the intent of this city council to encourage the unified efforts of federal, state, and local governments in promoting housing opportunities for all Americans, now therefore I, Chad Keen, Mayor of the City of Bristol, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim April 2017 as Fair Housing Month, this fourth day of April 2017.
So during the month of April, as well as throughout the year, all citizens are encouraged to be aware of their responsibilities to uphold the laws that protect our rights to equal access to housing opportunities regardless of race, color, sex, religion, national origin, disability, or a familiar status. So thank you very much.
While we've recognized some staff members, I'd also like to point out we have another housing partner in our audience, and that's our Executive Director at the Bristol Housing Authority. So good to have Mr. Steve Seifer's with us.
Next, we have a proclamation designated the month of April, oops, excuse me. Next, we have a joint proclamation with the City of Bristol, Virginia, designating the week of April 9th through the 15th of 2017 as National Library Week. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Margaret Firehough to read the proclamation, as Amy Cominy, Executive Director of the Public Library, is with us this evening to accept the proclamation. Amy, if you'd come to the podium, please.
Whereas libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for and with people. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions and library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities, campuses, and schools. Whereas librarians are organizers and information experts who for centuries have guided people to the best information resources. Librarians provide more than facts. They provide the expertise and services that add meaning to those facts. Whereas librarians continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies, especially as our society is at a critical juncture regarding the changing information landscape and the skills needed to thrive in our digital world. Whereas libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles in providing more opportunities for community engagement and delivering new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. Whereas libraries and librarians open a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, that's STEM with arts added, makerspaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. Whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. Whereas libraries work to serve all community members, including people of color, immigrants, people with disabilities, and the most vulnerable in our communities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. Whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore let it be resolved that the mayors of both Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia proclaim National Library Week, April 9 through 15, 2017, in Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia. They encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarians. Because of you and our experts in the library, libraries transform. This fourth day of April 2017, signed by Bill Hartley, Mayor of Bristol, Virginia, and Chad Keen, Bristol, Tennessee, Mayor of Bristol, Tennessee.
Thank you so much to the Bristol, Tennessee City Council for this recognition of National Library Week. The amazing staff at our Bristol Public Library is working hard to follow our mission to expand minds and build community. Since July, our staff in the Jones Creativity Center have logged over 1,800 teaching hours, helping our community members learn computer skills, how to write a resume, how to conduct and how to conduct job searches, among many other things. Also, since July, we have answered over 15,000 reference questions, held over 700 programs for over 11,000 participants, and circulated close to 190,000 items. We've been a little busy downtown in Etavoka. We have many events scheduled for next week to help us celebrate, like a movie showing of the movie Matilda, a 3D printer demonstration, and a genealogy class. On Sunday, to kick off the event, on Sunday, April 9th, at 3:00, we have the Beaver Creek Storytellers at the library to do a little storytelling, and on Saturday, April 15th, at 10:00 a.m., the children's library is going offsite to have Go Fly a Kite Day at Steels Creek Park. The Bristol Public Library belongs to this community. I'm so proud to be a part of it and all that we have going on. Even beyond National Library Week, there's always something to do, learn, or see at the Bristol Public Library, and we encourage everyone to come and enjoy their library. Thank you again to the council and the city for this honor.
Tonight, we have a very special recognition, a life-saving one. Tonight, we're honoring a young lady from our community who made a split-second decision and saved a young child's life. We're indeed lucky and very proud to be able to say Kayla Gabriel Eads is a Bristolian. On February 28th, Kayla was working her evening shift at Powell's on the Volunteer Parkway when a very upset mother walked up to the drive-thru, holding her lifeless child in her arms. The mother then asked if anyone in the building knew CPR. Without hesitating a single moment, Kayla ran out of the building where she laid the toddler on her apron to avoid the wet pavement and began performing CPR. Kayla was able to resuscitate the child. Within three minutes of the 9/11 call, the Bristol Fire and Rescue Team was on the scene and took the child to the hospital. Kayla's a senior this year at Tennessee High School. We're graduating in May. She learned CPR in one of her high school classes and had received certification in the technique. In talking with in talking about the ABC nightly coverage, she received Kayla as as she received Kayla as quoting as saying, "It's humbling my heart to know that such a small act of kindness as to help a mother in her need with her child's body laying limp in her arms is held to such high accomplishment. It is important to realize we cannot do anything in this life alone. This is not the type of miracle that is man-made." Can we now play the video, please?
Finally tonight here, our Person of the Week. There are so many quiet heroes across this country. Tonight, the young woman at a fast food restaurant jumping in when needed. Bristol, Tennessee, outside Powell's Southern Service Fast Food Restaurant, the white minivan pulling up. A mother, her three-year-old toddler limp in her arms. She had just placed an order when she turned around and realized her son had stopped breathing. She ran up to the window for help. Eighteen-year-old Kayla Eads, who works there, runs out and gives the boy CPR. She'd taken a CPR class at her high school. You can see the chest compressions. Kayla said she noticed he began to start breathing again, but faintly. Mom waiting on the phone, kneeling down. The ambulance arriving in less than three minutes. And just listen to how humble Kayla is about what she did.
I don't like the term hero because if you see a child or anyone hurt for that matter that you're gonna try and help.
She finished her shift and then went to visit that boy in the hospital.
It's something I remember forever. The blank look in his eyes whenever I first started to seeing him at the hospital was a total change, and it was amazing.
True heroism is not reserved for those in uniform, men and women that are in uniform only. Heroes come from all walks of life. Yes, even with young teenagers who struggled in being called a hero. For our world needs more heroes, Kayla, be a hero. I'd like to recognize Kayla's family, who is also in attendance tonight. If you guys would please stand, we'd appreciate it. Dad, Mom, Aaron and Tanya Eads, as well as Sister Paisley, Brother Easton, and Boyfriend Corbin. I'd also like to recognize Scott Nels, who is the Powell's owner and operator, who's in attendance as well.
Can we just add a couple things, Mayor?
I think it'd be entirely appropriate for any of our council members who'd like to say a little something. Yes, please do.
Well, first want to thank you very much for what you did, and also thank your parents for having a child who would do something like this and think so fast. Also, would like to, I know in our newspaper coverage, I think the teacher was interviewed, so hopefully this is also something for us to look at how important it is for our school system to offer, and there are some communities that really try to get all their kids certified in CPR. Certainly a great goal. And also, I just want to thank again, Scott Nels is a great mentor to the kids that work for him, and so want to thank you too, Scott, for what you do for a lot of kids.
As a mom, I can only imagine the distress that that young mom was in, and to have someone to come out and just assume the responsibility without, you know, in today's world, we so often times stop and think about, you know, am I going to be safe? But you did a great job, and what you did was absolutely selfless. I'd also like to thank our fire department and their quick response in a little under or right at three minutes. I was at home on a Friday night when it came on ABC National News, and I was just jumping up and down and just just screaming for everybody in the house to come and take a look because so oftentimes our area is not well represented. And to be nationally represented by someone that was as well spoken and is as well spoken, and the composure that you showed throughout the whole situation, you are absolutely a credit to everything we want Bristol to be. Thank you.
Kayla, I know that this is probably an uncomfortable situation for you, but just from the heart, I'm going to say that a lot of times people go out and try to do things to make a name for themselves, and most of the time you just have to be at the right place at the right time, and you have to be prepared. And I want to thank you for what you've done in your life in order to be prepared to meet that moment when when that child needed you. And I'm sitting here watching your mom, and I can't hardly keep from crying myself because I know that she's just busting, but thank you very much.
In Rotary, there's a motto, service above self, and I think that's something that you certainly epitomize in in that act, and I appreciate that. And as you pointed out, it's humbling to be pointed out in that way, but it is, if more people just took the small steps of what they could make a difference, then we can move mountains. So thank you. can move mountains. So, thank you.
Okay, we have no presentations or public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to the appearance of citizens. In this section, this section provides an opportunity for the public to address City Council on matters that are not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will likely not be made at this time, since most cases, neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to City Council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you in an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have been presented, provided a list of individuals designed to, to address City Council this evening. And we have Eddie Mabry, that's on our list. Mabry, excuse me.
Mayor, council members, it is again that our Eddie Mabry, who resides at 109 Sunnybrook Drive, come before this council to register our complaint with the business known as Intimate Treasures. Last business meeting here, we was here, and we brought the calls of the members of the Sunnybrook subdivision, where they are planning on locating that. And at that time, I believe the same words were said, that you would not probably have a response then, but it has been a month since then, and we have not heard anything from this council. Our concerns are the same, that we believe that it is morally to disadvantage us there at the Sunnybrook subdivision, where we have high school children, we have middle school children, and we have even the elementary-age children that are on and off the bus at that location on a daily basis. And it is our desire that this council would be able to give us some resolve as to your efforts and our concern as citizens of Bristol that lives in that particular area, as to whether you are concerned about what we are concerned about, or are you more concerned with the business that of trying to locate in that area. And I'm pretty sure that you are well aware that on the twentieth, there is going to be a meeting at the zoning, and that has come about because of petition in the zoning. However, we would like to know where this council stands with the citizens of the Sunnybrook subdivision. So, if you can, before we leave, you have, may I want to make a statement? Have somebody want to make a statement for you? Since it has been at least a month since we was last here, we would like to hear that, and we'd like to have on the record pretty much where this council stands with citizens. We realize that business is important, and there should be a balance between the business and the people that lives in these various communities. Once again, I don't believe that any of you will appreciate, and I don't believe you'd let it go easy, someone wanting to relocate in any subdivision where you live and put such a business. We appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you, Mr. Mabry. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to address council on any issue? Okay. This evening, we have appointments to be considered for three boards. First, we have an appointment to be made to the Bristol City's Beer Board. The appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office, ending January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. The candidate is Jason Walden. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass them to the city manager, where they will be read aloud.
Okay, Mayor, Councilwoman Running votes for Jason Walden. Mayor Keane votes for Jason Walden. Councilwoman Powers votes for Jason Walden. Vice Mayor Young votes for Jason Walden, and Councilwoman Fire Robin votes for Jason Walden.
Next, we'll consider an appointment to, to fill a resident position on the Bristol Housing Board. The appointment will fulfill an unexpired term of office, ending March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. The candidate is Dawn Rogers. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidate? Please mark your ballots and pass those to the city manager.
I met Ms. Rogers on the phone, and I think she's well-prepared and ready to work in this role, and I enjoyed meeting her, and I think she'll develop into a good member of the housing authority.
Councilwoman Running votes for Dawn Rogers. Mayor Keane votes for Dawn Rogers. Vice Mayor Young votes for Dawn Rogers. Councilwoman Powers votes for Dawn Rogers, and Councilwoman Fire Robin votes for Dawn Rogers.
Next, we'll consider appointments to fill two positions on the Community Development Advisory Committee. The appointments will serve a three-year term, ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The candidates are Todd Dolhany and Chase Mitchell. Would anyone like to speak on behalf of the candidates? Please mark your ballots and pass to the city manager.
Mr. Dolhany was, is already serving, he finished out a term, and so he's anxious to be re-employed. And Chase Mitchell is a young person that graduated from Tennessee High not too long ago, and I think it'll be a great asset to have some youth added to our board.
Okay. Councilwoman Running votes for Todd Dolhany and Chase Mitchell. Councilwoman Powers votes for Todd Dolhany and Chase Mitchell. Vice Mayor Young votes for Todd Dolhany and Chase Mitchell. Mayor Keane votes for Todd Dolhany and Chase Mitchell, and Councilwoman Fire Robin votes for Todd Dolhany and Chase Mitchell.
The next item on the agenda is the first reading of Ordinance Seventeen Two, amending the Official General Plan for Land Use. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, we'd be glad to. This was an item that was shared with City Council via presentation by McGillam Associates at your March Work Session. As councilors were, this was a goal from, from this current fiscal year, and it was to perform a comprehensive study of the city's existing trail system and recommend future improvements and strategies for implementing and funding a new trail and greenway infrastructure. This, as councilors were, this is the city's first effort to develop a comprehensive plan for the, for this type of infrastructure, and it's a critical element in terms of seeking grant funding opportunities. The, the study itself was, covered several months and involved input from many assets, from many individuals and groups within our community that had an interest in the citywide trail system. The comprehensive plan was presented to both the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission at their, at a joint meeting on Monday, March twentieth. The Planning Commission formally adopted the plan during that meeting. In order for this plan to become a part of the city's official general plan for land use, action does need to be taken by this board. And the importance of that is, as indicated earlier, a comprehensive plan of this nature is necessary for us to be truly competitive in grant opportunities, which, which would fund the lion, the lion's share of the expansion of our trail system. If approved this evening, we will have a public hearing and second reading then scheduled for our May second meeting of City Council.
Any council member have some questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action on the item?
Motion, second.
Any member of council like to discuss Ordinance Seventeen Two further?
I'd like to add, this has been a, about a year-long process, and we've had a lot of community input. And one of the things that some of us who are numbers-oriented, we like to turn to the back and see, and there is some cost associated with it, but if we don't have these things in place, when the opportunities come for some of the bigger projects, for instance, what's, everything's pretty well in place for Cedar Street and the extension there going out to King College, but other opportunities that come down the road. If we don't have these areas identified, and a project comes along, and there's a share of whether state or federal-type monies, those things can't even be considered. So, I think that's an important part of the whole scope of those grants that Mr. Sora spoke of. It's important for us to be able to have those things in place, and that's why I plan to support it.
And along with that, I would say, it's real important to have strategic growth that, and, and to address its sustainability, you know. We're, we're growing. We know that economically, we are growing and have that opportunity, and so we need to, to know where we go from here. And, and studies of this nature are, are very helpful in helping us get there. So, you know, and it has been, I know, as far back as three or four years ago, we were talking about the need for a comprehensive plan of this nature, and I'm delighted that it's been accomplished.
Comprehensive is probably an understatement, as far as this study goes. It, they covered everything that you could imagine when it comes to expanding our trail system. We've got a great city jewel in the, in the Steels Creek Park, lots of great trails there, but we do have a lot of other areas that are lacking. And this study was able to, to look out twenty years. It was able to pinpoint a couple of priorities where we should get started. And like, like everyone has mentioned before, this is definitely a wish list. There is quite a bit of expense involved, but at least it gives us a roadmap to look, to see where we need to get started and where the priorities are. And Parks and Rec has great access to different roads that are coming in, different state funding that's available. And we're a little bit behind the curve in, in expanding our trails and bicycle trails and walking trails. And so, this is just a, a good reflection of our economic state. As a city, we're very healthy financially, and it's a good time to start implementing.
I'll just say ditto, amen.
As well. Would anyone in the audience like to address council on this matter, Ordinance Seventeen Two? Tara, we're ready for the vote.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nance?
Yes.
Councilwoman Running?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Keane?
Yes. We have no ordinances on the agenda for second reading this evening, so let's move on to resolutions. Under the category of resolutions for council consideration this evening, we have Resolution Seventeen Thirty, authorizing a funding agreement for improvements at the Bristol Business Park. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, we'd be glad to. We could advance the slides, Brian, to, where is Brian? Okay. Let's go, let's go beyond that one, to, to the next slide. Okay. This track of property was purchased by BTES, or Bristol Tennessee Essential Services, in, in two thousand. The development that you see is, is Media General's print facility, and that was constructed in late two thousand and four and early two thousand and five. That opportunity was made available through grants from TDOT and Tennessee Department of Environment, excuse me, Economic Community Development, through state infrastructure access resources. The, the park has, has, has been marketed since then, but it doesn't have that large track of land that, that many prospects are, are seeking. Last month, we were favorably, received favorable response from Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development regarding a half-million-dollar grant. The grant application was collaborative effort with BTES, the City of Bristol, and Sullivan Networks. This is an exciting opportunity to commence this journey. The, the total cost to, to do a site preparation for approximately thirty-five acres is a little over, over two-point-three million dollars. So, the half-million-dollar grant opportunity gives us certainly a good start in, in that regard. Bristol Tennessee Essential Services has agreed to fund the balance of the construction with the understanding that proceeds from the sale of the property, as well as property taxes derived from the, the new development. We go to return that investment. That's consistent with TVA's contractual obligation, or contractual arrangement that they have with BTES, in that, that rate-pay of funds can be used for economic development purposes, as long as, at the end of the day, they're made whole from their investment. So, Resolution Seventeen Thirty acknowledges an attached funding agreement between the city and BTES that formalizes what I just summarized, in terms of, in terms of, of the responsibilities of both parties, in terms of the construction funding, as well as the repayment of that construction funding. This was a subject of our, this is also included as, as a subject matter of our work session in March, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action on the item?
Motion, second.
Would any member of council like to discuss Resolution Seventeen Thirty further?
Well, when Dr. Browder walked in this evening, I said, "Oh, have you come to share the good news?" He said, "Well, I've already done that." I said, "Well, you just can't toot your horn often enough." And a huge thanks to not only Dr. Browder and his team there of April Eads and, and Kenneth King and, and others, but also to Tom Anderson, who's worked diligently on behalf of the city here and to coordinate that, and Clay Walker, and everyone at Sullivan Networks Partnership. It's truly a collaborative effort. Commissioner Boyd was here about this time last year, I believe, and he was blown away by how well we work collaboratively, not only the city networks and Bristol Tennessee Essential Services, but how well we work collaboratively with the county and the surrounding area. And that's what this is a result of. This is a result of relationships that have been developed and built over a period of time. It's been working with our state legislators, legislators to get them interested in our area and to realize what's up here. And, you know, this is hu, this is a game changer for us, and we just appreciate all of the players that have, have come to the table to play and to address this. It's, it's good news for everyone.
Those are some pretty competitive grants across the state, and to, to be recognized and to be able to move forward, number one, the presentation to say, "Hey, here's the vision we have for what it can be," and then for the state to come along and support that, to say, "Yes, this is, this is a really great opportunity." And there's very few sites that will be quite this competitive, especially in our area, given the topography. One of the special things that we have all heard, as we've all served in industrial development or economic development capacities, has been, you need that flat space. It's, it's more valuable than just having some of the open land. So, as there's an opportunity, this is a great one.
I'll just add the thanks to the team. From what we understand, that it's the marketing of it that also is important, and that our community relations folks really helped as team players to really, really put a spin on it and really draw attention to it. So, when we talk team effort, we're really talking full-team effort. So, pretty cool stuff.
Hands down, this is the best opportunity that has happened to Bristol since Chapter Four Twenty and the development out at Exit Seventy-Four. When, when you're competing for a business to come into the area, it's, we're at a great disadvantage, because the first thing that people say is, "Well, you're just, all you have out there is mountains. You don't have any flat ground, et cetera, et cetera. You don't have, you know, a big enough plot." You know, the, the list of why people don't want to come here is just extremely long. But this win is actually gonna put us on the state map, on the national map. We can now compete in a much bigger market. Bringing a company in of this size is, is, is one of the big pieces of the puzzle coming into play. one of the big pieces of the puzzle coming into place. We've got a great downtown, we've got a great development out at Exit seventy-four. The one thing that we're lacking is economic development around the Bristol Motor Speedway, and this is the thing that is going to complete that. Of course, with businesses moving in, you get more taxpayers, you get people building houses, and it's a great boon to the economy. So, this is, this is something that we've been waiting for, hoping for, praying for, and a lot of work has gone into it, thanks to BTS, TVA, the state, our Economic Development Department, thanks Tom, Networks, everybody that worked so hard to bring this together. It's, it's really a perfect opportunity for celebration because it's, this is a really big deal for Bristol, and we're excited about it.
Whenever a company gets the authorization or vote from their board of directors to move forward on a major project like this, it is critical, the timing period from that decision until they, till the time that they get up and running that operation. And so this cuts several months off of that process. And so, I, I would also ditto the, the thoughts of great work to all of those who have put effort towards this. We really appreciate, appreciate everything you've done. Let me ask, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel on this matter? Putty, please. If you can give us your name and address, please.
John Weaver, nine eighteen Tremont Avenue. And addressing this here, I'm all for business and for more jobs because that's what we need. We need manufacturing jobs to support all the service jobs that we have. But the thing concerns me, has there been a traffic study done on this? What I see out on the East End, out on Weaver Pike, Industrial Park, and those areas there, they've got three ninety-four to go south. And then if trucking or something, shipping something north, then they don't have anywhere to go except through the town. And if they come down Weaver Pike, they're coming through two school zones, and of course, that traffic's pretty heavy in there with children and et cetera, vetrions. But there's no other way to go because three ninety-four ends, Virginia never did take up their part. So, it's just a dead end going north. The only way they have to do is either backtrack three ninety-four all the way over to the interstate or come right through town. And that's my concern. You know, what is it going to do to the traffic? I know you'll have additional traffic of people going to work, but we can always stand that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address us on this matter?
I'm still Ed Mayberry. I, my concern about this is, are, would we end up in a situation similar to they have there in Kingsport at I twenty-six and I eighty-one where they spent millions of dollars doing extravagant work, and they have not gained one, you know, business at all in that particular area. So, as you begin to think about this project, which it is good if you can have this, but the expense versus what is actually out there that is on its way in, I would have problems with spending money where we, you know, just spending it and don't know when you're going to get any business come in. And then what kind of business are you going to get to come in? Most of the businesses we are seeing located in the area are minimum wage jobs that people cannot earn a, a living off of. And we need something in here that people can actually earn a living off of.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry.
I'd like to add, add a comment based on that. I know you're still going to ask if there's any further comment, but I, I do know that the, the cost per acre is, is a great concern to the folks who would move into an area like that, and, and that's one factor that has been strongly taken into consideration. And of course, the, the primary user of this property would be an industrial oriented business at this point, manufacturing or something like that. But some of those things still have to get worked out. And we have seen how Piney Flats Industrial Park, which we have all been a part of through networks and some other joint services, whether it's how BTS, our water systems, serve different parts and things like that in that area, that has filled up. It took a number of years, but it has, and we've had this property for some time. And, and we've got to make sure that we're prudent with how we do it, and that's part of why we're seeing that if we want to be able to move that into being utilized, we need to make it more, better prepared. Because the timing to get that project live, once the board says go, they know they've got a set time that it's got to be done, and, and that does exclude us sometimes. So, thank you for your comments.
Well, and, and to just add one, one other thought is, what I've seen, what my experience has been, is that these types of things are a process. It's acquiring the land, it's getting, it's having the infrastructure put in. I think that it's important to note again that it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the state to, to initiate this work and of, of grading and site development, another step of the process. That step of the process, as, as Mayor Keane said, will help to push it forward, you know, at a, at a greater pace once someone has designated that they are interested in purchasing and in the further development of a building and so forth. So, it's a process. These things don't move at a rapid pace. Sometimes we wish that they would move faster, but because of the, the way that they do move, I think that it gives us time to, to really review and to study. There, I don't think there would be any hasty movement. But thank you.
I also would ask folks to keep in mind that, that our state is making a hard push towards the, the development of manufacturing and distribution within the state. They see a lot of merit in this, in this project. And you're correct in the fact that it, that it's not a for sure thing. We don't have an entity to go in there, but it makes it much more likely that we can put someone in there if we have pad-ready sites ready for them. And I, I appreciate the fact that the state is really making a hard effort in this area. So, it's, it's, it's just great. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address counsel further on this issue? Any other comments from our council members? Okay. I don't see it here, but I think we need to take a vote on this, Tara. Or do we? Go ahead.
Okay. Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fireoff?
Yes.
Mayor Keane?
Yes. Next, we have Resolution seventeen thirty-one adopting a public records policy for the City of Bristol, Tennessee. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the issue for the council, please?
Yes, Mayor. In two thousand and sixteen, the General Assembly amended through Public Chapter seven, seven-two-two, the Tennessee Public Records Act. And, and in doing so, they required local governing bodies to establish a written record policy. Now, in accordance with state, with state guidelines that were put forth by the Comptroller's Office. The city currently has an administrative policy addressing this. It was established by the city manager in two thousand and twelve. That no longer meets the requirements of, of PC seven-two-two. This, this legislation amends, amends the, the record, the, the state record policy by requiring, as I've indicated, local governments to establish a policy. It indicates that the local government cannot establish a policy that's more stringent or more burdensome than state law, and that the policy must include a process for making requests, for responding to citizen requests. It does establish a redacting process, should adopt a fee policy, and it should designate the title of the, of the individual responsible for public, for the public records request or, or serve as a coordinator for that. This, you will see this policy illustrated as Exhibit A to Resolution seventeen thirty-one. This does meet the, the criteria set forth by the Comptroller's Office, and will put us in, in, in compliance with Public Chapter seven-two-two. Staff does recommend adoption.
Any questions for staff from our council?
Has anything materially changed since we had this on the work session agenda? Okay. Thank you.
Is there a motion to take action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any member of council like to further discuss or comment on Resolution seventeen thirty-one? Is there any member of the audience that would like to address city council on this matter? Tara, let's take the vote.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fireoff?
Yes.
Mayor Keane?
Yes. This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Item A is amendments to the March seventh, twenty seventeen city council meeting. Item B, amendments to the March twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen city council work session. Item C, Resolution seventeen thirty-two, authorizing the purchase of lights for the decorative lamp post at Anderson Street Park. Item D, Resolution seventeen thirty-three, approving an interlocal cooperation agreement with the Emergency Communications District for the City of Bristol, Tennessee. And Item E, Resolution seventeen thirty-four, approving the purchase of GPS equipment.
Is there any member of council that would like an item removed from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to take action on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tara, let's take the vote.
Councilwoman Powers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rennie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fireoff?
Yes.
Mayor Keane?
Yes. Our Board of Education Liaison Report will be given to us today by Steve Plale from Tennessee High School.
Good evening. As you can see, I'm not Dr. Lilly. He sends his regrets. He wishes that he could have been here this evening, but he and Dr. Amy Scott from Vance Middle School were asked to join Dr. Helen Soul with Partnership for Twenty-First Century Learning to present at a national conference about the P twenty-one exemplar school award that Vance Middle School received earlier, earlier this year. So, he sends his regrets. I want to thank the city council for recognizing Kayla earlier this evening. We are very proud of her, and as the council already discussed earlier, we're very proud of what she, who she is and the, the courage that she displayed there that evening in, earlier in March. And we want to just echo our, just pride for her and the student that she was at Tennessee High School, and just know that she has great things in store for the rest of her life and here in Bristol as well. CT courses, I, I am the CTE Director, Career and Technical Education Director for Bristol Tennessee City Schools, and our CT classes are about real life. We strive to teach our students about the connections that they can make between education and the real world, and the things that they can do after high school graduation, and amazing things like what Kayla did at Powell's. Just earlier this, well, in March, earlier in March, our teachers visited businesses and industries as part of the annual BTES-sponsored Industry Day. I want to thank Dr. Browder for sponsoring that event. I also want to thank many of our industry partners for participating in Industry Day, including the Bristol City Police and Fire Departments for participating and making that opportunity available for our teachers. As you know, career and technical education prepares our students for the workplace, and that is great for our local economy and for our community. We've been discussing, or you have been discussing this evening, the opportunities that Bristol has to grow and to develop. And we also take that charge very seriously and are working hard to prepare our students for what comes next. Earlier in March, all junior students, as required by Tennessee law, took the ACT exam, which we provided a lot of support and preparation. We also had students participate in the First Annual Career Quest Industry Fair, Career Fair. That was in ETSU in Johnson City. It was a regional collaborative event where students got to explore four different industry sectors that are very prominent in northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia, and over five thousand students from across the region participated in the Career Quest event. Just this past week, we had a cafeteria full of students and mentors meeting about Tennessee Promise, and we really appreciate everyone, not only with Bristol Tennessee City Schools, but also with our, our city and staff, with city, who serve as mentors for that program. It is a tremendous opportunity for our students to receive a post-secondary credential or a degree, technical certificate after, after high school at no cost. Want to thank you again for your recognition of Kayla, and again, I appreciate all that you do for Bristol Tennessee City Schools.
Thank you, Steve. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I'd like to remind city council of, of some meetings this month. Starting Thursday, April sixth at noon, we'll continue our work session. This will be in, in the Annex Conference Room, and we'll be discussing fiscal twenty-eighteen goals and objectives. And then, then also on April sixth, Thursday evening, we'll have a kickoff of our comprehensive plan process. This will, will be a joint meeting with our Planning Commission. It will begin at six PM at the Steel Creek Park Lodge. And on Tuesday, April eleventh, we'll have a joint meeting of council and our Board of Education. This will address the school facility study. As you might recall from, from previous conversations, the, the consultant has completed their site assessment, the school facility site assessment, and they would like to report back to both the Board of Education and city council the results of their findings, and then also talk about, about potential, potential strategies for moving forward with, with the completion of their, of their comprehensive plan along with their study.
And is that at the school board meeting?
It is at the school board, at the School Board Administration Building. And, and again, that will be at, at six PM. Then also on Tuesday, April the twenty-fifth, City Council Work Session Discussion, Fiscal Twenty-eighteen Budget. This will, this will commence at ten AM, and this is typically a day-long process. We would also, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that we've got a little party in town later this month, from Friday, April the twenty-first through Sunday, April the twenty-third. We're going to invite all of our close friends in for a little weekend of, of NASCAR racing. It's, once again, nice to be on, on the national stage.
Thank you, sir. Vice City Council comments?
I'll go ahead and start us out. The mayor and I had an opportunity, first time since I've been a council member, to be able to go to Washington DC and, and visit with some of our elected officials there, as well as meet with some other folks. And it was a great opportunity, and it was, walking through some of those, we, between a couple of meetings, we were able to walk out there near the Lincoln Memorial and a couple of other things. And it was remarkable to be reminded of some of the history and some of the, the rich heritage that our country has. But while we were there, we took several opportunities, and as we spoke with folks, we, some of the issues that we brought up and opportunities included the opportunity that's coming forward down at the airport with the additional hundred and forty acres to be developed down at the airport, on the runway or right adjacent to the runway, and then some transportation-related issues that are, while they seem like small issues, it can make quite a difference for being able to help some people out to get through, from one bus system to another, to get a ride to where they need to work. And one other interesting topic, because we were there for National League of Cities, there were some very robust conversations about how to deal with the opioid problem in communities around, around the country. And that was, really piqued my interest to see how they're dealing with some of those things. And, and I think some of the connections there will hopefully help connect our community with some additional things to experiment and engage with, to try and help our county Department of Health, our state, and others in the challenges that we face, you know, across the board on that front. in the challenges that we face, you know, across the board on that front. But I appreciate the honor to represent the city as we went up there, and it was a blessing to be able to go up to, despite the heavy snow that morning, we still had Tennessee Tuesday, which is a breakfast that the two U.S. Senators, Corker and Alexander, host, and we still had, we were still represented well, not just Bristol, but others from our area, and appreciate their service.
Lee?
I just want to say that it is a process. The jobs, you know, we talk about jobs and the minimum wage jobs and of that nature. It's a process to bring back in jobs that are of a greater pay scale. We're working diligently, not only at the BTES Park, but also, as Jack mentioned, through the Aerospace Park. Again, it's another game changer. It's something that, you know, the state is very interested in. We're very interested in partnering, not only regionally, but with the state, and hopefully that will happen. But these jobs, we have a tremendous Economic Development Director and Department, and, you know, there are lots of things in the pipeline right now that we are competing for, and so hopefully, a lot of those will land our way. Along with that are our fire and police services. We just can't, can never emphasize enough what an outstanding job they do. Their accreditations are not just state, they're also nationally, both departments accredited and recognized, and so we're very fortunate to have them. Along with, as Mr. Sora pointed out, it's a total team effort, and sometimes we don't always recognize the Community Relations Department as often as we should, but if you go to our local television station, they're constantly implementing new programming. I know BTS has their station that they're bringing up to speed and are implementing new programming there as well. Four years ago, I made a point that what does the door to our community look like? Our door has certainly been refined, it's been painted, it's been enhanced in many ways. We've worked very hard through our departments. People oftentimes say, you know, Bristol is just, you know, such a great place now. I would be remiss if I didn't give credit, though, to our former councils that have, who set the stage for us to come into play with our current council. So it's a good time to be in Bristol, it's a good time to be from Bristol, and I just, every day, I just am amazed at the good things that are happening.
Yeah, it kind of feels like we're living the dream tonight. We've got saving babies, Crystal Motor Speedway Spring Race coming up, we've got an incredible community partner with Food City. We're updating our school building plan, we're upgrading our trail studies, we're developing business parks, but with that growth does come pain, and I do hear the concerns, traffic concerns, how's it going to change the face of our city, and we do listen, and we do hear what you're saying. But before all of these announcements come, there's hours and days and weeks and months and years of careful consideration, and we do want progress, but we want to make progress with minimal results, I mean, minimal risk, I'm sorry about that, maximum results, minimal risk. And really, the city's function is basically infrastructure. That's the big thing that we provide in a lot of these situations going forward. We do hear your concerns about types of businesses that are coming, and we do look into those matters in depth to see what it, your concerns versus legally what we can and cannot do, and so we're looking forward to having a discussion with you at the Planning Commission meeting, and hopefully, between community citizens and business, we can come to some kind of resolution that will make the city happy in some way, hopefully. But we do hear you, and we do hope there's a positive outcome.
I had a few things. Steve Plale and the school system, wanted to thank y'all for the Wonka drama that was recently played in the great school auditorium, and also great to see our young people doing some drama, and for some kids, that's their main activity and a real important outlet, so enjoyed seeing that and being in the auditorium. Again, on National Library Week, just wanted to comment that the, besides the National Library, the library's celebrating National Library Week, our library foundation is celebrating National Library Week, and I think council members have gotten invitations to come to Leader Breakfast on the eleventh, and where we can update a little bit of what's going on in the library. But our foundation is pretty excited to be doing some different things, working in partnership with the library. Also, I'll mention, I believe it's on April thirtieth, there's a drug takeback, which we have takeback boxes that are available at the police departments all the time, but there's a big push on April thirtieth in Sullivan County and in our region, and beside the prescription drug abuse and opioids, and it takes, takes a village, takes a coalition, takes lots of different approaches, and one of the things that we found out is that the majority of people who at least do prescription drugs abuse the first time do not purchase their drug. So they get it from somebody else, from some medicine cabinet, from somebody who's been prescribed it, et cetera. So the belief is to try to get people not to keep medications, unneeded medications in their medicine cabinets, so the drug takeback also, there's a count it, lock it, drop it program as well, to say, lock up your medicines when you're not using them. Say what, twenty-ninth, not the thirtieth? I think, I looked on the website, that might have been last year. Thank you so much. It's the twenty-ninth is the takeback, and I think, where is that, Mary Lee? Is it in, that's what I thought, in the court, City Hall parking lot? And I believe, in the past, the pharmacy school is trying to do a little research for how much is turned in, of what kinds of drugs, et cetera, to have some idea of what the effect is. Also, I'll just say, probably several people here have got an invitation for the Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia Realty Association Forum. I hope all the candidates got that. It's April twentieth at the library at seven, and I see my challenger, Brian Boyd, who presumably got an invitation also, so I'll see you there. Check your email. April twentieth, we'll talk after. Anyway, and then, and Brian's here. Then a couple of harder things to talk about, I just wanted to mention EXIDE. I was very interested in the news coverage and the letters and the newspaper on Sunday. I certainly share concerns about EXIDE here in the past and across the country. Also, we know we want good jobs that pay, so it makes it difficult, but also just wanted to say, from my understanding at this point, that the City Council doesn't have any decision-making role, that they own the property, they're coming back and doing work, so at this point, that we don't play a role in decision-making in that issue, but certainly I share concerns as well as interest in the scale of jobs that come, both the number as well as what the pay is, et cetera, so. And I'll also get a little more dangerous and publicly just say, for Sunnybrook, I apologize for not as good a communication. I have met with staff, I've looked at the site plan, and after that, spoke some with Roma Phillips, but not with everybody, so I apologize, I'll follow up with that. I'm trying to learn, understand if the city has anything legally, any legal opportunities to do anything different, and I'll be interested in the twentieth BZA meeting, which hopefully will help to determine that as well, but at this point, that's, the city may not have a role to be able, an opening to be able to work with some different choices. And then the last thing, just wanted to say that maybe, and I could talk to, I could say this on the side, but Sullivan County Family Justice Center is an awesome project, and it might be nice to get Karen Boyd to do a little presentation during our next council meeting, or June, or something. It's a huge opportunity. It's where Tennessee is taking the lead in our country, and I know everybody's read about it, but a few more details would be really, really great, and that's it.
Thank you for mentioning that, because I had just shared something a couple of days ago about that same opportunity. Thank you.
I like other comments about businesses, new businesses that are coming to town, and the role of the City Council, and what can and can't be done. I'll also say that we do have a lot of positive things happening within the city, economic activity, races, all kinds of different things along that nature, and we had a little concert this past weekend, actually a big concert this weekend, about five thousand people were there. I had great coverage from the Bristol Herald on that, along with other media outlets. It's all part of the hundred-and-fiftieth celebration of King University. I'll also mention that the inauguration of Whitaker for King University is coming up this week. The festivities start on Thursday, and I'm not sure when they end, but the university's been having a year-long celebration of this hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. I want to say thank you to Amy Comani from the library, Mike Browder from Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services, Steve Cypress from the Bristol Housing, Malin Luttrell from Bristol Baseball, and also Steve Plale from the school system, as well as former Mayor Joel Staton for being here. With that, I'll say thank you to everyone for attending. We are adjourned.